Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 14th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam clerk, can I roll, please?
Yes, Mike Kincaid.
Absent.
Excused. Keith Campbell. Sandra Jasonowski. Dick Robertson. John Copeland.
Absent.
Also excused. Sierra Messenger and Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Move on to old business. There's nothing on my agenda, anything from council. Okay, move on to new business then. First item up here is ordinance 2025-32. This is New Cold Project Phase Three. This is an introduction. Catherine Fennello.
Good evening. Catherine Fennello with the Law Office of Dinsmore and Scholl. You have before you a form of an ordinance which was approved by the Lebanon Economic Development Commission earlier at their meeting. This proposes to issue bonds for New Cold Project Phase Three in the amount of not to exceed $20,500,000. You also have a form of a trust indenture in a financing agreement with respect to this proposed bond issue. The bonds will be sold to the bank, which is, will be Zion's Bank, and the New Cold will provide a guarantee, but the bonds are to be paid with the real and personal property, incremental property taxes generated from the Phase Three project. So no city pledge, only the incremental property and real, sorry, incremental real and personal property taxes generated from the project. Happy to take any questions.
So this is one of these developer-backed bonds, right? So against the city partnering with him, that's essentially, this is a part of our incentive agreement with this, with this project instead of doing a tax payment or something like that. This is going through that. So, yeah. Hey, Keith, can you do the microphone there?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Make it plain English, though. Make sure that there's no city money going into this.
That is correct.
Yeah. Bond money only.
It's, it's the revenue created by the project.
By the project.
But I just want everybody to understand that.
Yep.
And I should probably go ahead and add for the record, some of the facts presented at the Economic Development Commission meeting, that this will, this project will result in approximately $504 million of investment by New Cold and approximately 200 jobs.
And we also have Ted Butler here from New Cold. So if the city council has any questions for New Cold about this expansion, actually, Ted, you might come up real quick and give a quick.
Is that 504 billion or million?
500 million.
Okay.
Yeah, 500 billion would be a lot, Sandra. Yeah, no, 500 million, but certainly still a significant investment in our community, absolutely. So.
Yeah, it's about 505 million is, is the current budget. Ted Butler, incentives manager at New Cold. For those of you not familiar with New Cold, we are a global leader in advanced cold chain logistics. We operate in, in the U.S. for major facilities, including a facility here in Lebanon, which was completed under a phased approach, Phase One in 2022, Phase Two in 2024. To date, we've invested about $335 million in, in the facility at 904 Edwards Drive, and we've created about 300 jobs with the Phase Three expansion, as Catherine mentioned. This will be a brand-new state-of-the-air facility, looking at $505 million of capital investment, another 200, 200 jobs. And as I mentioned in the, in the RDC meeting, this, this will be New Cold's largest facility globally. It'll be almost a million square feet, and we're excited again about the opportunity to be locating that facility here in, in Lebanon. I, I want to thank, you know, Mayor Gentry, the, the council members, you know, on behalf of New Cold, we appreciate the introduction of the ordinance this evening and look forward to working with the, the city to, to move the process forward.
Thank you, Ted. Any questions for Ted from New Cold?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your continued planned expansion in Lebanon. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Rob, do you mind reading the ordinance? I know it's a little of a thick one, so maybe the highlights, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2025-32 is an ordinance of the city to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, and it's called the New Cold Project Phase Three and authorizing and approving other actions in connection herewith. I'll hit the highlights again as the company provides the city as well as the redevelopment commission and the economic development commission that it has requested the city issue taxable economic development revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $20,500,000. That's defined as the bonds. The Economic Development Commission prepared a report in accordance with the Act regarding the proposed financing of the project, and will submit that report to the Lebanon Plan Commission. The Economic Development Commission earlier this evening held a public hearing in accordance with Indiana law on the proposed financing of the project and adopted its resolution and the project report, which had been transmitted to and finding that the financing of the project complies with the purposes and provisions of Indiana law, and it will be a benefit to the health and welfare of the city, and it's anticipated to result in an investment of approximately $504 million in the area. There has been submitted to this council for approvals a financing agreement between the city and the company, a trust indenture between the city and the trustee, and these are defined as financing agreements along with this bond ordinance. And the council finds as follows, that the financing of the economic development facilities referred into the agreements that will be located in or physically connected to the allocation area will result in the diversification of industry, the creation and retention of business opportunities will serve a public purpose and be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city. There was a public hearing again at the Economic Development Commission. The proposed financing of a portion of the cost of the project and certain costs related to the issuance of bonds are in the form of that such financing was approved by the Economic Development Commission earlier here this evening, and the city authorizes the issuance of bonds, again, in a maximum amount of $25,500,000. The mayor and the clerk treasurer authorized and directed to do such acts as may be required under the documents and under this bond ordinance, and this bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and compliance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any further comments or questions from council? Okay. Any general public comment concerning ordinance 2025-32? Okay. We'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be October 27th at 7:15 p.m. Okay, next item up here is ordinance 2025-33. This is concerning the Paddock Place product, project. This is also on its first reading. Catherine?
This proposed financing was also considered at today's Lebanon Economic Development Commission meeting. Also being proposed here is the issuance of taxable economic development revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,200,000. That will be allocated towards certain public, certain public infrastructure, and I don't know if, if Ben wants to explain any more of that, but it might be an important component of the project. Here, these, well, these bonds will also be payable from tax increment, but with an 80% pledge. So the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission will retain 20% of the real property tax, incremental property taxes. I don't know why I can't get that out tonight. And I think that that is it for that one. This one will result in an investment of approximately $58.5 million in the Paddock Place economic development area, which was established by the Lebanon Economic Development Commission in August and also confirmed this evening at their redevelopment commission meeting.
Oh, Ben, highlight the project too, but any other questions for Catherine at this time? Okay, Ben, could you give a highlight of the Paddock Place?
Sure. Good evening, council members. The Paddock Place project is a critical housing project that we're working on on the north side of Lebanon. As Catherine mentioned, it's about a $60 million investment, multi-family project, 230 units, a majority of those are your traditional apartments, and about 20 of them are, are townhomes. And a couple of unique things about this, and at least what I think are a little bit more unique than some projects, is one, because of its location, there's a pretty significant public infrastructure investment that needs to be made to extend road and utility infrastructure from the south to the north to accommodate other projects that are surrounding them. Typically, you would primarily just have private infrastructure serving just aside, but these, they're having to extend public infrastructure through to decide to serve, actually Spring Creek Development to the north that's up there at 39 and 300. That's one, one component that's fairly unique and why we're looking at doing this TIF bond to offset some of the infrastructure costs. The second is, is this is a workforce-targeted project. This is a project that's going to provide housing for our teachers, our nurses, and most critically, the advanced manufacturing workforce that you might see at a place like New Cold that we just talked about, or Eli Lilly, and provide them places, some of our new people that might be moving to the area for the job, a place to land and live in addition to working. So it's really important to keep those rent rates such that you can accommodate the people that might be in those jobs like this. And so you look at the overall cost, the public infrastructure cost is actually a little over $5 million, and so we're providing approximately $3 million through the TIF bond to offset a portion of those infrastructure costs. And again, as Catherine mentioned, we're using about 80% of the property tax increment generated by the project towards that TIF bond, and 20% of it will pass through to the redevelopment commission. So happy to answer any questions if we have any more there.
And, and something to keep in mind, too, as the tax structure in Indiana changes with, we're, they want cities to be less reliant on property taxes, obviously having the income taxes and have people laying their head in town from a residency perspective is equally important now, too. So that's part of, certainly the property taxes are a piece of it, but, you know, certainly to pay for our, you know, police, fire, those service needs, those will still be collected there on the income tax side as well with that.
There's 230 total units. A majority of those, I think 210 are traditional apartments, and then there's about 20 townhomes that are also associated with it.
And then there also be the associated road impact fees the project will pay. They'll help us also reconstruct the 300 North Corridor to the, kind of the four lane that's been contemplated as well.
That you want to try to bring in, you know, affordable rent for people to be able to pay for rent that's affordable. Is, is there some type of agreement or something that's made with them to have some kind of rent structure or something? Because, I mean, they could just change it at any point, and you know what I mean?
Yeah, not, not necessarily, but the market will also dictate that beyond what we're doing. John was here earlier this evening and had to leave, but he said that their one-bedroom apartments, which are about 800 to 1,000 square feet, their average rent is somewhere in the $1,400 a month range. So again, they're not super affordable, but that's just really what the market bears right now. And then their two bedrooms will be more like $1,500 to $1,700 a month in terms of the rent. So their, their goal is to try to make it as affordable as possible, too, because they want to rent them. And so that's, that's, that's what they're, that's what they're targeting right now based on the cost where they're at.
But, but also to clarify, so this is not necessarily a tax credit project, though, where the rates are dictated, right? So this is a, this is a market rate complex, obviously trying to target a price point that is attainable, but it's not a, what you might see with a tax credit-based product where they have those kind of chained, you know, levels of rent because they're, they're part of a, you know, a program through the state or through the, the, the federal government with that, if that makes sense.
And to know, down with the new, like, out, south of town and stuff, all the new projects that went in, if those are all, like, rented, because I've heard that we have got a lot of, I don't, this may or may not be true, I don't know, a lot of, like, rentals that are newer that people, like, are having a hard time affording, so they're not full yet. Are we, is that, is that true? Are we still having trouble filling around town?
Yeah, so, so I know, like, the Breakman Building downtown is essentially fully leased. Hickory Meadows, that's down by the Field House, I think they're slowly renting them up. I had heard just recently that they are filling up. We're seeing, like, Eli Lilly renting a block of them and putting people in there. Some of their workers are coming in the area, so I think they are starting to fill up, and obviously those Hickory Meadows, that project's even, the rent rates are even higher than what we just talked about tonight. They're in the 1,500 to 2,000, almost 2,500 for some of their bigger ones. So they are the highest rent rates we have in Lebanon right now. So they have taken a little bit longer to absorb, but they are starting to rent up.
Yeah, there, there was, it was slower starting, but then it has picked up significantly, certainly as a lot of the construction trades are coming into town too now, and the Eli Lilly and also some of the construction companies are leasing those up for, for their workers as part of that, too.
That one area's been there for.
Yeah, and the ones down in Noble and Patterson, they're.
Right.
They're almost all full, aren't they?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding, yeah.
They were, looked like they were somebody in every house.
Yeah. And one stat I heard, this is not current, but in Boone County, the average vacancy rate is usually like 5% to 10%, but in Lebanon, at that time, it was like less than 2%. So these are actually adding to capacity. We need it already anyway, and they're starting to be absorbed, but we're still, we still need more rental housing units, apartments and the like to be able to accommodate what's coming.
Any additional questions on this for Ben or Catherine? Okay, Rob, do you mind reading it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2025-33 is an ordinance authorizing the city to issue taxable economic development revenue bonds defined as the Paddock Place project and authorizing and approving other actions in connection therewith. Again, the company, which is Spectra Lebanon Propco LLC, has advised the city, the redevelopment commission, and the Lebanon Economic Development Commission, that it's requested the city issue taxable economic development revenue bonds in amount not to exceed $3,200,000. The redevelopment commission has or is expected to adopt a resolution pledging 80% of the TIF related to this project, and that's defined as the pledge, TIF revenue, TIF revenues. The Economic Development Commission on this evening, October 14th, conducted its public hearing in accordance with Indiana law and found that the financing will be a benefit to the health and welfare of the city and its citizens, and the construction of the project is anticipated to result in an investment of approximately $58,500,000 into the area. This council has been provided a draft of a loan agreement between the city and the company, a trust indenture with respect to the bonds, and these are defined as collectively the financing agreements as well as this bond ordinance and a draft of the economic development agreement. Council finds that the financing of the economic development facilities referred to in these agreements will result in the construction of the project, the payment of the bonds from the pledged TIF revenues, and will result in diversification of industry, as well as the creation and retention of business opportunities, will serve a public purpose, and will be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city. The proposed financing of a portion of the cost of the project, including any capitalized interest described in the financing agreements, was approved by the Economic Development Commission, and it is hereby approved. Again, the city is authorized to issue bonds in amount not to exceed $3,200,000. The mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to take any such actions that is defined in this ordinance, as well as to effectuate any and all documents that are required herein, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Rob, any public comment now concerning ordinance 2025-33? Seeing none, we'll take that up for second reading in our next meeting, which will be October 27th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next up here will be ordinance 2025-34. This is concerning fixing the salaries of certain employees of the city of Lebanon, also known as our salary ordinance. So, Tanya, hand it over to you.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-34, fixing the salaries of certain employees of the city of Lebanon. Be it ordained by the common council, two-thirds of its members being present and concurring therein, following statement of salaries is the base pay for positions listed, that full-time civilian employees, the city of, of the city of Lebanon, receive longevity pay at the rate of $75 per year, per each year of service. Longevity pay begins after the first full year of service and does not include the current year of service when calculating the amount for each employee. Public safety longevity is .0075 of a first-class fire or patrolman salaries and capped at 25 years of service. All first-class firemen and patrolmen with the five year, with five years of service or less will remain on the civilian longevity schedule until their sixth year of service. That if, also, section four, that if a current employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than the amount listed in said ordinance, plus the longevity of the employee transferring to said vacancies. I will now read the, each department and their annual salaries as we have calculated them in the budget. Department of Public Works is $721,072. Parks Department is $1,161,737. The above rates apply to a 35- to 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise requiring the above-named employees to work more than 40 hours per week as intended, they'll, they shall be compensated according to the Federal Labor Standards Act and the city's overtime policy. This section shall not apply to department heads. The planning department is $802,200. Historic Commission, $6,000. Police Department, $3,147,457. Fire Department, $2,683,080. Clerk Treasurer's Office, $309,582. Mayor's Office, $137,148. Community Development, $100,920. Engineering, $166,765. Lit Public Safety for Fire is $1,090,260. Lit Public Safety for Police is $960,926. City Court is $10,500. Stormwater is $559,651. The annual salaries of the following council members shall be, the total is $85,000. There are seven members, with six of them receiving $12,001, receiving $13,000 as the president. The annual salaries of the following board members are Board of Works is $3,600, and other boards are City Plan Commission, $9,600. Board of, Board of Zoning Appeals, $6,000. Park Board members, $3,600. Plan Commission, zoning and park board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings that they attend, and this ordinance will take effect January 1st, 2026. And this is the first reading.
Thank you, Tanya. Again, this reflects what we talked about in our budgets. At this time, is there any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-34? Okay, seeing none, we'll take that up for second reading at our next meeting on October 27th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next ordinance will be ordinance 2025-35. This is fixing the salaries of elected officials for the Steel Lebanon.
And, just as the mayor said, ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials beginning January 1st, 2026. Be it ordained by the common council, the city of Lebanon, two-thirds of its members being present and concurring therein. Maximum salaries of the following elected officials of the city of Lebanon beginning January 1st, 2026. Mayor, $73,671. Clerk Treasurer, $78,582. The council, which I already mentioned, but they are elected officials, is $85,000. In addition to the funds paid by the civil city, as set out in section two, which I just read, the following elected appointed officers to be paid from funds of the municipal utilities are as follows. Mayor, $35,673. Clerk Treasurer, $20,450. And the deputy clerk treasurer's, $31,500. That's the first reading for the ordinance.
And just to clarify, too, that is a pay freeze for last year as well, too. So, any comments, questions from council on that? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-35? Again, we'll have a second reading of that on April 27th at 7:15 p.m. All right, and finally here, we have ordinance 2025-36. This is setting appropriations and tax rates for the city. Essentially, this is our city budget. Tanya?
Be it ordained and resolved by the Lebanon Common Council that for the expenses of Lebanon Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2026, we set apart several funds herein named for the purpose herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Lebanon Civil City, the property tax levies and the property tax rates are herein specified, are included. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government and Finance. And again, this resolution is 2025 ordinance, it's not a resolution, is 2025-36. And I will read through the funds and the amount we have budgeted for 2026. Casino Riverboat is $93,000. Our general fund is $16,69,178. Debt service is $142,904. Bond number two is $3.5 million. Bond number three is $368,021. Bond number five is $436,475. Fire pension is $305,319. Police pension is $205,361. Local road and street, $331,000. Local road and street, $331,719. Motor vehicle highway is $1,078,849. Park and Recreation is $1,766,676. Park Bond is $386,373. Cumulative capital improvement is $24,500. Cumulative capital development is $150,000. Stormwater Bond is $503,284. And sanitation is $1,001,257,749,000. These are home rule funds that are not reviewed by DLGF, but we always put these in our budget. So food and beverage is $750,000. Public Safety Lit is $3,632,548. American Rescue Plan is $136,884. Park Non-Reverting is $100,000. Police Continued Education, $68,000. Police Deferral is $8,571. Sidewalk Non-Reverting, the 50-50 program, is $17,464. Code Enforcement Non-Reverting is $4,639. MVH Restricted is $353,267. Planning and Zoning Non-Reverting is $425,000. Fire Non-Reverting is $18,318. Fire Training Fund is $4,079. The Sidewalk Escrow Lebanon Point is $2,696. Park Miscellaneous Fund is $12,000. Police Interdiction Fund is $941,000. And Stormwater Operating Fund is $2,510,538. For a grand total of $34,664,353.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yep.
Any comments, questions from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-36, our city budget? Okay, seeing at our next meeting at, you guessed it, October 27th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next item up here, we've got a couple of additional appropriations requests from Chief Batts. First up is Resolution 2025-29.
These additional appropriation requests will be divided among the following lines: vehicle maintenance, Station 11 operating line, equipment line, and fuel. And these are funds that we need for these lines to make it throughout the rest of the year.
Any questions on those for Chief Batts? I will say, if we go back to our budget, last year, we did talk about, we put our best guess in here, right? It was, you know, we obviously did a lot with the salary changes last year, and so we said, hey, you know, when it comes to fall time, and we're running low on fuel or running low on vehicle repairs, we told them to come ask for it. So that's the result of this. So this shouldn't be unexpected from the council. So, Tanya, mind reading the first one for us?
Resolution 2025-29, whereas it's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city, it has been determined that now is necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. Resolution 2025-29 is to appropriate funds for the new hire clothing, vehicle maintenance, and fuel, as Chuck just stated. The following will come from Fund 1101, General Fire, in the amount of the total $63,000.
Thank you. That ordinance has been read. At this time, then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-29. Any public comment, please come forward. Station here for the record, any comments in three minutes if possible. Sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-29. Any council discussion comments? Is there a motion from council?
We approve Resolution 2025-29.
A motion to approve is our second. Second from Sandra. All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's approved. Thank you, chief. All right, next up will be 2025-30, resolution.
So everything I just stated applies to each of those.
Okay, you just did all three at once.
I lumped them together.
Fair enough. All right, so I'll tell you.
Resolution 2025-30, whereas it's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city, it has been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Resolution 2530 is to appropriate funds for mental wellness and miscellaneous equipment. And this one will come out of Fund 202240, the lit fire, for a total of $22,000.
Tanya? This time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-30. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-30. Any further discussion, comments from council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-30.
If motion to approves, our second. Second from Rob. Sorry, I'm a bitch. Motion second, all in fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. All right, and finally, Tanya, have you read 2025-31?
Resolution 2025-31, whereas it's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city, it's been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. With Resolution 2531, it's appropriate funds for Station 11, to appropriate funds for Station 11. And this will come up from Fund 4402, which is the CCD Fire, and this is in the amount of $17,000.
Questions or concerns with that on council? Okay, I'll open the public hearing then on Resolution 2025-31. Any public comment, please come forward. Station here for the record, any comments in three minutes if possible. Seeing movement, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-31. Any thoughts or a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-31.
A motion to approves, our second.
Second.
Second from Rob. All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from council? Okay, move on to claims. Entertaining motion concerning the claims.
Motion to pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims from Sarah is our second.
I'll second.
Second from Sandra. All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our claims are approved. Any announcements or discussion? Oh, just for people watching at home, we did, Board of Works approved and set the Halloween trick-or-treating hours on October 31st from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. as our typical standard that we normally do. So just give everybody that has been set now by the Board of Works. So other announcements, discussion?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Dick Robertson, has worked hard on our amending our golf cart ordinance. We've also picked up an ordinance for UTVs, and we're all working on a third one for electric bikes. These are areas of concern within the city with city police and how people are driving them. So he has worked diligently on those. He and I had an opportunity to sit down with the police department and looking at those ordinances. We are going to get those. I've sent them out to the council members to kind of review, add some things in. I've also sent them to Rob to look at, to make sure we get those up. And hopefully, so the next meeting, we will present those so that we can actually get those on the books, so to speak, so that by the first year, we have those new ordinances in line.
So we can have those on the agenda then for you guys next one? Okay. Any other announcements or discussion? Okay, I'll turn entertaining motion to adjourn. Sarah wants to go home? Second from Sandra. All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, our next city council meeting will be October 27th at 7:15 p.m. We are adjourned.